All right, I have six o'clock. I declare this meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Patrick County in session. We have an invocation from Reverend Wayne Moore. Please stand.
Heavenly fathers, we come here tonight, Lord, we are thankful for all your many blessings, among which are the right to rule ourselves under the guidance of your sovereign hand. We pray, Lord, that we would accept this as a privilege for which we have gratitude and as a responsibility to which we will be faithful. Lord, we thank you for this local body of leaders, our Board of Supervisors of Patrick County. Lord, we pray that you would just bless them with love for their families, love for you, love for this county, love for the people and citizens of this county. Lord, I pray that you will bless them with wisdom and discernment as they seek to make the best decisions, that you will give them that guidance. And, Lord, I pray that you will give them conviction to always do the right thing when they know it's the right thing, regardless of whether it's hard, or unpopular, or even misunderstood. And dear Father, bless them with respect, respect from the citizens and all who see and know their hard work and their diligence. Lord, bless them and all of us with hope, hope for the future, hope that things will be better, that we can make a difference when we work together. And, Father, we would not forget tonight those public servants who put their lives on the line for us, fire and rescue, law enforcement, paramedics, our military. We pray, Lord, that you will protect them as they protect others, that you will help us all to be good and diligent citizens of this United States of America. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our military here and abroad, and those first responders, EMS, sheriff's departments, police, who serve us so well? You may be seated. All right. We have the agenda before us. Do you have any changes?
I only have one change this evening under new business. If we can strike a pitch, you hang the word, court of self record, he will not be with us now.
All right, thank you. With that change, do I hear a motion that we accept this agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All right, Mr. Kendrick, Mrs. Stywalt, Mr. Perry, and I vote also. I would say that Mr. Simmons is unable to be with us tonight. Also, the meeting minutes, do we have any questions, additions? Do I have a motion that we accept them? Second.
I'll say.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, Ms. Stywalt, Mr. Perry, and I vote I also. And then the approval of the bills, claims, and appropriations, any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve? Second?
I'll say.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, Ms. Stywalt, Mr. Perry, and I vote I also. We will take comments from our citizens. Does anybody not get to sign it that wants to sign it? No, that will take, not take a long time. No one has signed up, so I declare public comment closed. Our first order of U Business is Ms. Carly Smith, Business Manager, Airlife.
This is my first time here, so do I just sit at the coffee?
Sit or sing it or whatever.
All right, well, first of all, I would like to thank you guys for your time and allowing me to come in and speak to you this evening. I am the Business Manager for Airlife Virginia. I also help manage its emergency medical transport bases throughout North Carolina as well. Gary Ayers is back there, and the lovely ones, yes, you stated earlier, have been working at Airlife Virginia for about five years, and is also a local, so I brought him with me. If you'd like to speak up at any time, enjoy being here, don't worry. So, the reason I come before you today is I've been working, Airlife has been working in this county for almost five years now. As obviously COVID has ravaged the first responders in this area, as well as just healthcare in general, the nation is in a staffing crisis, and there's a few things that I would like to bring to your attention that I think Patrick County can do that might bring a little bit of relief to your 911 dispatchers and your first responders in the area. So with that being said, there's two points that I would like to address this afternoon. The first being an auto launch. What an auto launch is, in essence, is something that your dispatchers can do when they hear a certain call come in. So if it's a motor vehicle accident with entrapment, a high-speed crash, fall from 30 feet, stroke, heart attack, anything, any of those hot topic words that come through dispatch, you can automatically put us on standby, meaning we are ready to bear by the aircraft, or if not in the aircraft, if the accident is outside of 15 nautical miles, if it's within 15 nautical miles of our base, they just stand by the aircraft and wait. It basically gives us more time to be able to respond to you, so by the time your first responders, your EMS become on scene, we can either A, be already on the way, or B, by the aircraft, ready to go. So at the end of the day, it is a no-cost, efficient, and very effective way that lots of counties surrounding you already utilize to help have better patient outcomes. That golden hour, the trauma golden hour, is truly backed, it is life-changing when it comes to that, so every minute counts. We have done studies, and it actually improves patient outcomes by having an auto-launch policy, and it also improves our response time up to 15 minutes. So especially in this staffing crisis that is nationwide, it's just one thing that your first responders have to think about on the way to the call. Is Airlife coming? Who's coming? And also, you have a lot of aircrafts that surround you, and we're all incredibly busy. So not only does it give you additional peace of mind of your first responders, but it also gives them time, your dispatcher's time, to find an asset that's actually available, because sometimes we're already on a call, so is Wake Forest, so is Lifeguard. So it actually gives your dispatchers more time to find a resource that can respond as well. So in discussions with Scotty, in discussions with your 911 director, they all have mentioned that this is the body to see when discussing these matters. So just wanted to make sure that was the first topic I addressed today, because I truly think it is something that would be a huge benefit for this community and life-saving, to be completely honest. Let me make sure I didn't miss anything. The criteria is 100% customizable, something that your Board of Supervisors, your EMS agency, or your 911 center can work together to make. You control all of it, and it doesn't mean you have to call a certain company, you don't have to call Airlife. I'm just purely bringing this to your attention because I truly believe it would help make a huge difference in patient outcomes in this county. Other than that, I would like to also discuss an AirCom app. It is something that Air Methods provides free, of no charge, to any and all dispatch centers around the nation. We are the largest air medical company in the United States, so we do this a lot. We dispatch over 400 aircrafts throughout the United States. That being said, we have an app. It can be a desktop app, it's literally an app on your phone. EMS can pull it up when they're on scene and see how far away the aircraft is to their location. 911 can ask for an aircraft without even having to pick up the phone. So if you think of your, put yourself in a 911 dispatcher's position, when you need an aircraft, you're getting probably a lot of calls. A lot of people are calling to let you know that something bad is happening. So it frees up those dispatchers from having to answer a phone call from our AirCom app or talk to our dispatchers. It can all be done virtually, and you literally type in the address of the accident, it populates with a Google map, and it shows you exactly where it is. You click confirm, and you hit standby. You can have the standby option, or you can hit launch, and it actually gives you a live ETA/ETE to the scene and then also to the hospital. So you can give your first responders real-time updates. You can also give the family real-time updates of when that loved one is going to be arriving at that hospital system. So, the AirCom app is a wonderful resource. Like you said, once again, both of these are free assets, but the auto standby policy is just a policy, but the AirCom app is a wonderful access that we provide at no cost to all 911 centers. Henry County utilizes it and loves it, Rockingham County utilizes it and loves it, Henry County and Danville and Pittsland County also uses it. So, the AirCom app is extremely easy and can be utilized by 911 dispatchers to request, and then also by your first responders, so that they can see real-time where this asset is, because as I'm sure you can imagine, when you're on scene and having a very traumatic patient, 10 minutes can feel like an hour. So being able to have that peace of mind to check your phone to see where this resource is, and you can also change where you want to rendezvous, you can change the landing zone, where you want us to land through the app as well. So it's incredibly high-tech, and it's incredibly time-efficient for your dispatchers, and it also, once again, provides a very big peace of mind for your first responders on scene so that they know we're coming and when we'll be there. That's really all I have for you. I know I just spoke a lot, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to field any of those in the meantime, or I can leave my card and discuss at a later date, but just wanted to bring both of those things to your attention.
Do we have any questions or comments?
This is fairly simple, probably self-help, load writing, or whatever.
Yeah, you just download it, and I mean, it takes, I've come in and do about one or two classes with the dispatchers. Once they get the hang of it, it is very, very easy. It takes about five clicks. Once you type in the address, you just hit launch, and then there's also a chat function, which is incredibly beneficial, that you can relay patient information. So you can say, hey, we got some more information, it's a mom, or, you know, she's entrapment with two femur fractures, and so then our crews can plan on, oh, we're going to be needing to give blood. They can already, in their mind, be having a triage and treatment plan. So that trap function is also incredible, because you can be giving updates as you receive them from your first responders without having to pick up the phone. It can all be through a chat function.
So that policy, is that a policy that's, is there a template out there that we could use, is that something that our EMS coordinator would write, or where does that come from?
I have a, I have a policy example that is utilized in other counties. I'm happy to share with you all the criteria. Once again, it's completely customizable. There's some pretty standard ones, high-speed crashes, fall from 30 feet, heart attack, stroke, that are pretty non-self-explanatory, but we have anything you could possibly need to know about, and I'm happy to share, and I'm going to email Scotty after this, anything you need to know. No problem.
Anybody else? Sounds good.
Wonderful. Thank you guys so much for your time.
All right, we have Mr. Greg Preston from Piedmont Community Services.
Good evening.
Hey.
First of all, thank you for the invitation. I'm Greg Preston, Executive Director with Piedmont Community Services. The last time I was here, I mentioned to the board that part of the code says that Piedmont's job is to make sure that we're providing adequate services to Patrick County. This evening, we have some exciting news for the county. We applied for a grant, so Regina Clark, the Director of Prevention Services, and also Dana D. Hart, Assistant Director of Clinical Services, have some good news to share with the council.
Okay. I feel like I'm going to be in the hot seat.
I am Regina Clark. I'm the Director of Prevention Services for Piedmont Community Services, and I'm very excited to bring this information before the board, because it's great news for our community. We are the recipient of what we call a HERSA grant. It's Health Resources and Services Administration, and it is catered toward rural communities, and this particular grant application focuses on opioid response programs, specifically the psychostimulant support. So we just found out a few weeks ago that Patrick County will be the recipient of that funding. As you can see here, the amount is $500,000 over the total for three years. So this is something that we initially applied last year, found out, like I said, in June. It started July 1st of this year, and it will conclude on August 31st of 2025. So we have three years of funding to really take a look. We've already done an assessment of what some of the gaps and needs are in the community, and we've put together a strategic plan for what that's going to look like. So the handout that you have has a little bit of information about the grant itself. We were required to establish a consortium, and you can see the partners there are Tri Area Community Health, Patrick County Family Practice, Patrick County Sheriff's Office, Patrick County Department of Social Services, and of course Piedmont. So some of the services are there that we are already providing with Piedmont. And Dana D. Hart, she's the Assistant Director of Clinical Services with our school-based programming, she's here for any questions, especially around the clinical aspect, but we're providing a lot of services already. But as with anything, we can always expand on that, we want to improve that. For this grant, we did take a look at what are some of the needs. We've had some conversations with folks here tonight. We did kind of our own assessment. We've been partnering with some folks with Virginia Tech, working with the Engaging Patrick County Initiative on the opioid response. So we've been doing a little bit of work, working with quite a few partners here in Patrick County already, and so we're really excited to come alongside the work that's being done and kind of give it some infrastructure, and then, of course, expand on it, and most of all, meet the need that we have here for our folks that are struggling with substance use disorders. So you can see there that some of the goals that we have outlined here, this will, this funding will allow for three positions to be hired. One is a community liaison, that is someone who is going to be working as a coalition coordinator. Again, already partnering with some of the folks and the good work that's being done, just strengthening it, giving it a little bit more formal infrastructure, and then that person will be communicating between the partners and the consortium. Of course, expanding our services, and I'll let Dana speak on this in just a moment, but expanding our services with the outpatient counseling, the substance use disorder treatments and services, even our recovery services, our community recovery program that we have. We have Pace to Recovery, which includes peer navigators. So there's a very comprehensive approach to this for both prevention, treatment, and recovery, and quite a bit of information there. Another great takeaway from this opportunity is that the Sheriff's Office is going to receive funding for our additional deputy. The criteria for that is that they have to be and will be trained in crisis intervention team training. This is something that allows them to be able to network with folks in the behavioral healthcare system, understand the substance use disorder, understand mental health and behavioral health, and then, and how to work with those individuals that are in the time of crisis, and get them connected for services. And again, Dana will be a great resource if you have questions on that. So again, providing trainings, providing support with DSS for parenting services, even transportation is acknowledged in this grant funding. So we're just really excited to have this opportunity and bring it before you all tonight. So, what questions do you have? You're just blinding away. Yes.
But this is going to be solely for, like, drug-related?
It is. It is. Specifically with opioid, it's like a stimulant use, so your meth, your methamphetamines, ecstasy, cocaine, even misuse of medications for ADHD and depression and things. So we want to make sure people are using medications appropriately, disposing of medications appropriately, all of this.
These services will still be available until September 25th, and you said, five hours past the time.
Absolutely. Do you want to speak to that?
Well, I think that's part of, you know, we do, we get a lot of Medicaid reimbursement for a lot of the individuals that we see, that's not everyone. We work with anybody, how they come to us, that's just how we're set up as a community service board. But that is the goal, is to get reimbursement so that we can continue to fund this. Because, I mean, I think this is, and I don't get angry, we very much, we hold it, indeed, in something like this for some time, so we're very invested.
Piedmont has been around for many years, as you know, and so it's something, I love, and our executive director has said this before, if it doesn't exist, we'll find a way to build it. And so I feel like we have three years to be creative, and there's already some long-term visioning with this, so I, yeah, I do believe that the services will be here to stay, and then hopefully each entity that is part of our continuation plan that we have to put forward even in year one, is how do we continue these services? So what kind of strategic planning do we have? And so each partner will be responsible in their own way for being able to continue the efforts. Yes, yes. Any other questions?
So the community liaison, what will that person do?
That person is going to be responsible for leading the community coalition that will somewhat be established. There's already a group, the Engaging Patrick County Group, that is meeting, and we've been working very closely with the partners that are involved with that already. And so they've kind of given their blessing, so to speak, to go forward with the coalition in a more formal sense, because there are some more structured guidelines that we tend to follow with an official coalition, if you will. So that person will actually serve as kind of liaison between Piedmont, the consortium members that are listed, and then our community members. We want folks from the community to be part of this. We also want business partners, school officials, there's quite a few, healthcare, quite a few folks that we would like to have at the table. So that person would be paid staff, they'll help coordinate that. As you may know, when you're working with volunteers, you can have a great group, but it helps to have that one person that maybe is paid, that that is their sole job, to coordinate those things and be a point of contact for those.
Any other questions?
And then Fresh is going to mentor us to get that DFC grant.
Maybe. Part of our three-year plan is, yeah, we would like, we do have a coalition in Martin burg Henry County Drug Free MHC, and we have a coalition in Franklin County, which is all of that is in our catchment area for Piedmont. And so both of those have received what we call drug-free support funding, and that is a funding that actually can go up to 10 years. And so that is something that, it can be a mentoring grant, so there's a process with that, and so that is going to be part of our strategic plan, is to set Patrick County up to be able to apply for that big federal funding, which is EDC, and hopefully get that.
That would be good.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you, Greg. We have, is he going to speak, Mr. Mike?
So Mike Tang with Spectrum Charter, he will be with us when we have our public hearing, and we're requesting to schedule that tonight for August the 8th. I will need a motion from the board, please.
Okay. Do we have a motion to schedule this public hearing on August the 8th? Six thirty, we have a second?
Second.
All right. It has been motioned and seconded, so Mr. Kendrick, Ms. Stywalt, Mr. Perry, I vote I also. All right. The budget amendment, we need to schedule a public hearing. Do we have people who are going to speak to this?
We actually have Mr. Wood with us this evening, if you have any questions for him, and then I'm sure he would be willing to come back out the night of the public hearing for us.
Please go on. Okay, so we need to schedule this for August the 8th also. It is, as I understand it, more or less, we're keeping.
Yes, yes, we'll make sure things play clear and take care of.
All right, so we do need a budget hearing, because it's more than 1% of the budget that's going to be timed. So, do I have a motion that we have, do we want to schedule this for six on the 8th or seven?
Let's just go with it.
All right, so it'd be the setup for budget amendment on August the 8th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, second. All right, Mr. Kendrick, Ms. Stywalt, Mr. Perry, I vote I also, so that is scheduled for the 8th. And then Department of Social Services requests for budget appropriations. Do we need to do anything with that?
Yes, I need to.
All right. We, all right, we have within our packet that request, do we have a motion to approve? All right, second. Do we have a second to approve it? It's basically just giving them the money that's already been appropriated.
Awesome.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, all right, Ms. Stywalt, Mr. Perry, I vote I also, so it is approved. We have Mr. Sean Atkins, DDA Director, with an update.
Pretty quick update, but same cloth of receiving grants. We've received the final leg of funding for the business development, so it's the full $700,000 asked, and we got the Capitol Express Regional Commission. You have to find a boost point right now, get a little click at heels last week in the office, and you have the news. So, yeah, we got the whole half million from Tobacco Perpetualization Commission, and then we got the full $700,000. So we're hopeful that this, that there's one last thing, maybe we can do the whole project in one fell swoop. The fact that we got the maximum amount that we asked for for both commissions allows us to kind of go after one final link, and that we worked, talked to DFC, we're hopeful to be able to get it done in one fell swoop. Either way, this is, so far so good, yeah, so we're, yeah, we're, we are, yeah, that's tough to go to DC, but it's already, you know, the full staff recommendation, we saw opportunity to roll, and it's just a matter of, it just won't be, you know, approved through the big leagues.
Good. That sounds good. Anybody have any questions, Sean?
Can you give us an update on Broadway?
Yeah, we did. We just officially sent in a letter of intent for 2023 funding, so it doesn't mean we have to, but if we didn't send in the letter, then we wouldn't be able to. So in terms of the 2022 grant, just talked to West Piedmont, and I'll just say, agreement is imminent between those two, those two bodies, so that has not been put to paper officially, but that's the best it's looked at. I feel good about that, so.
Can you talk a little bit about the public hearing, what the franchise agreement is what it's talking about? You're setting up on the 8th.
We're going to let Mike Tang speak to that. He'll be here, and obviously, I'll give him questions, he's going to go through it with the board, yes. Yes, he's excited about coming out on the 8th. I've already talked to him.
I guess there's. Yeah, well, for the 2023, I guess the only, I guess the last detail for that is, we're not currently tied to an ISP for that, for if we go, if we end up applying for 2023 grant. Right now, we're rare street, actually, we're finding the gaps that won't be filled potentially, you know, there will hold. potentially, you know, there will hold throughout the county, so depending on where those gaps are, yeah, we can kind of adjust or look for another ISP if, if we like, so, because right now, we're not, we're not timed.
All right, so the long and short of it, when will we think we'll have full broadband for the county?
The year on the grant is 2024. So I guess I'll say 2024.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, I guess it's looking like we're going to have everybody who wanted on board, I think it's actually great.
All right, so it looks like by 2024, we'll have everybody who wants.
To be connected. To be connected. Including myself, because I have my own spot down.
Yeah. All right, that is, it is, very good. All right, for all business, we're looking at in-house tax assessor. You going to speak to that, Ms. Stace Wood?
So we've done a little bit of research and shared a little bit, based on Mr. Kendrick's request, and of course, I think you probably don't want us to do a little bit more of that research. Couple of numbers that are coming our way, over $200,000 to have one in-house, and for some of our neighboring jurisdictions, that's what it costs them to do it. You know, we paid just a little over $200,000 for our last reassessment, and I know it's six years out, and I understand that, but I, I think if the board would direct us, we would go ahead and continue to do some more research on that, and really get some concrete numbers for you as to what it might look like for Patrick County to now, as we look at other jurisdictions and what it costs them, really look at how that applies to us, what that would cost us, if the board would direct us to continue to do the research on that.
I've got some pillars out too, but I haven't got the information back.
Okay, great, share with us when you do, Clayton, that will help us.
I will, last month.
Okay, I understand.
And we might, at the same time, look at maybe doing it more often.
Yes, it would be like, potentially every two years, is what it might look like, but we'll, we'll do some more research on that for Patrick County.
I noticed, I noticed somebody joining, and they do it every four years.
And I've talked to people that do it every two years, so it's, we're doing research, we'll continue to do that.
So just to the board, it's going to have a tax assist that's in the office?
Well.
An annual call?
It's an annual call.
That's, that's just, that's, those are some bigger counties, I think we could do it for less.
We're gonna, we are going to try to now, like I said, we've looked at some of the other jurisdictions and what it costs them, we really want to see what Patrick County needs are, we'll work with the Commissioner of the Rennettville on some of those needs, and really see what it looks like. Cindy, if you'd like to speak to it this evening, you can, if not, we'll continue to work on it. We're just going to continue moving forward at the board's pleasure with our research.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. First, on property tax.
We've got some speakers with us tonight, Cindy's come out, and Mr. Kendrick will speak to you a little bit about, she's provided some information for you in your packet, and also a little handout here, too. All of these figures that I'm going to give you tonight, I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but you've got them all there for you to look at and review. As, I'm sure you're all aware, vehicle values increased dramatically since COVID. Last year, we came out pretty lucky. We value our vehicles as of January 1st. So when we got our values last year, we were kind of ahead of the big surge that we seen. So we only seen last year pickups usually went up, and most of them went up $4,000 or less in value. So those people with pickups paid about $60, $70 extra in tax last year. But as we went through the year, we heard the horror stories from other localities that did not value as of January 1st, and they get values through the year, and their values were just astronomical from what they were. So we kind of knew going into this year, we were going to probably be faced with that. We normally get our NADA values in late June, first of July. We were able to get those in April this year, so that we can kind of get a heads up and get to working. My staff's worked really hard to get all the vehicles valued four months early this year, so that we would be proactive in what figures we had. And what we've got here is automobiles, for the ones in Patrick County, we have 12,157, they went up $37 million in value from last year. Pickup trucks, we have a little over 6,000 of those, they went up a little over $13 million. Motorcycles went up about half a million dollars. So our personal property increase for just automobiles, pickups, and motorcycles is a little over $50 million increase from last year. Also, not only are they going to pay more tax, when the pot is larger, your PPTR percentage has to be spread thinner. So they're going to be looking at about a 10% reduction in their PPTR credit. Last year, they got a little over 37%. Way it looks right now, they're probably going to be somewhere in the ballpark of 28% credit. So they're going to be paying more there as well. What we've pretty much seen is probably 95% of vehicles that were newer than 2003 have went up. Most of those biggest increases are in the last 10 years. If you've got a 2010 or newer, then you're seeing a really large increase. If your vehicle is 2002 or older, then you're probably going to see about the same or a little decrease. But the most of our vehicles are the 2003 and above. And I've put down some examples there of what the increase is going to be, we've got an automobile, or SUV, or pickup, and you can see there, a lot of people that have pickups are going to pay $200 to $300 more in personal property tax this year than they did last year. And a lot of those are the same ones that had a $60 or $70 increase last year. If you've got a SUV, you're looking at more like a $200 increase. I've put in your packet what other localities across the state are doing, and they're varied. Some localities have chosen off community change, some have decided to waive the BLFD for one year. Our BLFD is about $450,000, is what it brings in each year. Some have adjusted their PPTR rate, just increased it and give them that percentage, and some people have just are only valuing it 80% of the value instead of the value that we have. The increase we're looking at right now is about $855,000 in additional personal property revenue from this increase. I did call today, Tinner County, Carroll County, Boyd County, and Franklin, they've all discussed it, but nobody's made decisions of what they're going to do. Danville City is going to increase their tax relief from 35 to 65. And we just got word this afternoon that Grayson County went ahead and sent it out like it was, it was so bad, now they're going back in giving 28% refunds and rebates to those people because it was so bad. So I'm not here to tell you what to do, I'm just trying to give you some information to help you decide if you want to do something, and the options that you've got to decide. We would have to know by the next board meeting, August the 8th, because we need to get the PPTR percentage set at that time, and then we need to get the tax stuff to Sandra so she can get the deals out September as well. So I wish I had some information to tell you what other joint and localities were, but I think everybody's trying to decide what to do, and the best way to handle it.
Do you have any idea if we did 80%, what that figure would look like?
I don't, and to do that, we've already put the values in, to do that would probably be very difficult, and I'm not going to say we couldn't, would be very time consuming if we could do it. The BLF is probably the easiest way to do it, and, you know, just to waive it for one year and then put it back for next year. If you do the PPTR percentage, you've got to be careful, because then your business owners or somebody that has a business used vehicle, they're not going to get any credit. Now, so that's not always the fairest route. And like I said, in your packet, I wrote down every, every locality, what they're doing across the state. Some have even lowered the tax rate, I don't think you want to do that. So you've got several options if you want to do anything. I just wanted to give you the information so that you can kind of decide, definitely by the next meeting, if you want to do something.
Any questions?
Me too.
I don't feel good doing anything that raises taxes on the people. If we're going to raise it on that, we need to lower it on the real estate or something else. We just, that's, that's penalizing the people with the used cars that don't have money to buy a new model anyway, and they've got enough burden on them, so whatever way we work it out, we need to work it out, not have it. I know that money would be nice, and that's what we, we had talked about one time, was finding other ways to generate the tax than real estate, but we already raised it, we 're levitating five cents this year, in which I voted no on that, so.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't be, but there's no kind of way unless we could make it work out, even whatever's the easiest way to make the state work out.
Right, that's, yeah, now, like I said, we're looking at $855,000 extra revenue if you did the BLF here, so it's worth it about half, if you decide to do that option. I don't know, that would make people go a lot better to save $25,000, we'd be going to trip wonder, but, you know, it's something.
We probably need to study it some more.
Yeah, I, this is just me, but I think we, we would want to do something, you know, but we need to look at the options.
Yeah, I wish I could tell you what next year's going to hold. I have no idea, unless it's just a one-time year, and next year, we're going to see them go back down, or we're going to even see.
Right, we just have to do it for one year.
Yeah, and then see where you're at next year.
So if we bring it up at the next board meeting and vote, will y'all have time?
Yeah, as long as we can get it by the 8th, we can still get everything done, it's just treasure.
Well, let's do that. So think about what you want to do.
I think the treasurer, she had a few things to say, too, because it affects her office a lot.
Yes, I know.
Good evening. I really don't have very much, I just wanted to reiterate, Cindy kind of gave me the facts, but some of the surrounding localities, I would just ask and encourage you, as you think about this before that next board meeting, that whatever decision that you make, that you stand by it. And obviously, you're probably going to get a lot of flack regardless of what you do, unless you give a really big, we're probably all going to get a lot of flack, let's just be honest, and we probably might be doing some of our sales when we see our own bill, you know, but that's just the way it is. But a lot of these localities have said one thing, and then they've turned around and did these refunds, and they're having to issue thousands of refund checks. And, you know, that gets really complicated, and you have to, the checks get lost in the mail, people are passionate, if they're, they're a minimal amount, they get turned over unclaimed property, you know, you're, you're just doing a lot of undue things, in my opinion. So I would just ask, you know, keep in mind, I think it appears that you all want to give the taxpayer some type of break, and I get that, probably, as Cindy said, the BLF would probably be the simplest, that's probably not the biggest tax break, excuse me, for them, but whatever you do, you know, when you make that decision, I'm just encouraging you that when your phone does ring at nine o'clock at night, and it probably will, you know, that you stand by it, because it's going to be a hope, or make up your mind for certain what you really want to do before you go forward, because then we're all going to pay the price. So we're going to, we're going to pay one way or the other, but I would like to make it as smooth as, as we could, and undoing is a whole lot harder than doing it however you want to do it the first time. So I would just really ask that you, in a unified agreement, come up and stick with whatever you decide, because you are going to hear about it, you know that, you know it's coming, so I would just ask that, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll just go to the library, where they treat you like a friend. All right, opioid settlement. We have that in our packet, I think. Is there anything we need to do besides say thank you?
That's right.
All right, thank you, thank you. Thank you attendance, November 13th to the 15th. I don't know who signed up to go, me?
Only mine, if any will.
Well, I would encourage you to go, because you meet people from all over the state, they have the same problems we do, and you can network, you learn a lot, it is well worth it. So if I can encourage you and lead you along, I would. All right, let's see what happens. Administrators' report.
Sure. So, of course, I've been in contact with Piedmont Community Services folks with regards to the first grant that you've been visible to tonight, and it's very exciting news, very, very exciting for Patrick County. We met with Harrison Henderson, banker consultant, discussed some options with him, so thanks to the county board. I've had meetings with department heads, personnel meetings, we are working on the solid waste plan, the five-year update is underway, and to go into DEQ by the 13th of this week. So that's quite an undertaking, and I appreciate all the help from Ms. Walker and, of course, Mr. Mike as well. Also, I wanted to talk with the board a little bit, give you a couple of dates for our board retreat that is upcoming, and we want to look at the dates of September the 9th and September the 10th, it's a Friday or a Saturday. And you could come back to me with an answer, just call the office would be fine, if you don't know right now. Just wanted to get it in front of you, so you could be thinking about it before we know it.
Be the ones open to you.
Okay, great.
Right.
And we are going to, we're going to do it in the Mayo River District this year, trying to, you know, move around to all of our districts as we move forward, and so we're going to have it at the Reynolds Homestead, that's our plan as of right now. Also attended a dam safety meeting, so that was some repairs from Richmond, and also that was Steve Recker today. So there's some changes coming where that's concerned, but we're, we're working on that diligently, myself and Mr. Vermin, and so I'll just keep you up to date on, on those things as they come about. We entertained a solar presentation with Mr. Jay Joyce and his team, it was with regards to our jail, we wanted to see, they were the highest electrical building we had, so they did a study on it and found that it wasn't going to work with that building, so just wanted to give you an update on that, that we did actually have a meeting and a presentation. And that is all I have.
Okay. Before we move to the supervisors' report, let me ask about this Carly Smith, do we need to do anything officially, because I won't move forward with.
You do, you want to move forward with the process.
Yes.
So we'll just reach out to Carly and let her know that we are very interested in the police submit the information. I know she's going to share it with Scotty, and Scotty can get it our way, and we'll get it underway.
All right, is that our?
That'd be the board's, we call it.
Okay, I just didn't want it to drop. All right, Mr. Kendrick, your report.
Let's see, West Piedmont didn't meet last month, and TSA didn't meet, I think the only one I had was the EDA in Chompton, give a brief on that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Starwell.
Just like you said, West Piedmont, West Piedmont, you know, you're continuing to work on your new grant application, your new grant application, working on the law. I think you did continue to do an excellent job, I'll just say that, Mr. Mounts is, he does, he's done some work off, and he's making some new changes, and we're sharing ideas on the tourism budget council, so I've also attended a budget review.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perry.
I haven't had much since the last meeting, the holiday and everything, so that'd be easy for me to.
All right, sounds good. Well, I met with Mr. Henderson, and DSS met, they're having a tough time, like so many, just finding workers, hard by workers. And so, then had an advisory committee meeting, and so that's basically all of this this month. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, what we, I'll entertain.
I do know.
Thank you.
I still know.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of Pitt, Virginia. I move that we enter into clause 2 to discuss the appointment of specific appointees to public service authority and solid waste committee, as well as the assignment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or redesigning of certain public employees all pursuant to subsection A1, and discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, term per scope of such contracts where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county related to the business development center of the state grant process pursuant to subsection A29.
of the county related to the business development center of the state grant process pursuant to subsection A.29.
I'll second that.
Yeah, what are you saying? All right, Mr. Kendrick, Ms. Starwell, and Mr. Perry, I'll vote out also. So we are moving to close session with your take. Quick, five minutes, Greg.